I think it's going to ask to pull up.
I'd like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, March 19th. The order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss has been excused, Councilmember Simpson has been excused, Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, would you please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is the proclamations and presentations. Tonight, we have a business showcase featuring Mastrajianis Distillery with Mr. Elias Mastrajianis, and I hope I came close to pronouncing that correctly. President, would you please come up to the podium and join me?
Mayor?
Do you need to correct me?
Oh, no, you did it perfectly.
I like those Norwegian names are easy. Tucked between the train tracks and South Tacoma Way at 8016 Durango Street Southwest, Mastrajianis Distillery offers a cozy tasting room for guests to try handcrafted liquor while also giving them the chance to see how the distillation process works. At the back of the space sit two stills, one hand-hammered copper from Portugal and the other a modern vodka still. Hundreds of gallons of wine is heated through these machines to create 200 to 300 cases of liquor, distillery owner Elias Mastrajianis manufactures each year. In its third year of operation, the distillery offers five liqueurs, all inspired by his Greek heritage. Offerings include grappa, distilled from grape palmas, which is a byproduct of the winemaking process, Ozu, an anise-flavored liqueur. Mastiha?
Mastija.
Mastija, made from an aromatic tree resin found only in Greece and aged and unaged brandy from riesling grapes. Mastrajianis Distillery is open for tastings by appointment. It is because of its pioneering spirit and its one-of-a-kind products that the Lakewood City Council recognizes Mastrajianis Distillery as its March 2019 business showcase. Now, I'd like to present you with this framed recognition and a Lakewood City pin.
Thank you very much.
And then invite you to say a couple of words.
Of course. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. It's been three years of journey for me, and with every business, starting a small business is really tough, especially starting a small craft distillery. But from the beginning, the city of Lakewood has been so helpful. They guided me through the entire process, getting my license and helping me open my doors, which is super important. Without that, we will not be here today. So, we would like to say a big thank you to the city, the admin, the fire department, everybody at the front of the house that's been helping small businesses succeed, and welcome here. So, really proud to be the first craft distillery in Lakewood. Hopefully, we can expand that and bring more people, more breweries, more wineries, distilleries. And finally, I want to say thank you again and extend an invite for everybody here that want to try the product. We're very open, very transparent with the products. We use 100% Washington grapes and/or apple, so really proud that we use local as much as we can and showcase Lakewood. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on down for a mandatory. We now move to the public comment section of the agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. When I call your name, please approach the podium, state your name and city of residence, such as Mike Branstadter, Lakewood, Washington. You'll have three minutes. Yellow light comes on at 30 seconds as a warning, red line comes on when your time is up. If you are here to speak to at either public hearing, those are on an amendment related to signs and vacation of a portion of right of way, you'll have an opportunity to speak at the public hearing. You could speak to that if you wanted to at this time, but it wouldn't be part of the record that's created at the public hearing. So, moving to the list, the first person who has signed up is Jeff Cox.
I'm Jeff Cox. I'm the current president of the Silkox Island Association, and I'm here speaking on the petition in front that the council has considered on the lake management district formation. I wanted to let you know that we have some members who have participated with the American Lake Improvement Club and your city advisors, some staff of your city, giving us good advice on how to petition the city on this matter. We have then gone out with this information to the members, to the property owners on Silkox Island, and of the 26 property owners that own shoreline lots, 22 have signed the petition. Two more have told me that they support the petition, they just didn't get signatures. Of the two people that didn't get back to me, one is actually here tonight. There's eight other islanders here with me tonight to support this. And we have amongst us, that plus the lot we have as an association on the mainland where we keep our cars and our boats, we have 30 shoreline lots that is represented by this and totaling about 3,006 shoreline feet of lakefront, which is a little over 11% of the private ownership shoreline of the lake. So, just want to let you know that we strongly support the cause behind forming the lake management district to take care of the erosion of mill foil in the lake and other invasive species. We're very, very thankful for the guidance and support of the city staff. They've been tremendous in this, not only with us, but with dealing with Department of Ecology and going after a grant to help support the treatment program and in dealing with JBLM and Kent Marine. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. That was the only person who's indicated that we wish to speak at public comment, but if you wish to speak at public comment, that does not preclude you. Please step forward at this time and get your three minutes. Mr. Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, Lakewood, Washington. This video was done two years ago. Trump is a man of vision. Trump is a man of discipline. He knew two years ago, just after this, in the campaign, that uncovering that dirty little nasty secret that there were people getting killed, drugs being sold to kids, coming off across the border. He knew, the press and elected officials who have been hiding the little secret either by overtly not allowing you to ask the questions or just not asking the questions. He pushed, pushed, didn't care what kind of noise came out of the press. And he still, in almost every other speech, brings back the angel moms. The public is beginning to become aware of that nasty, dirty little secret that happens when we allow unvetted, illegal veterans to come across the border at will. And he's going to win.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Hearing that, I declare public comment closed. Right now, will you dial in Councilmember Simpson, please? You're live, John, at council. We're just ready to move to the consent agenda. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of February 25th, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March 4th, 2019. C, motion number 2019-14, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Northwest Electric LLC, increasing project spending to the amount of $299,202.23 for the 2018 citywide electrical repair project. D, motion number 2019-15, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Axum General Construction, Inc., increasing project spending to the amount of $727,739.24 for the Gravelly Lake Drive Bridgeport Way to Silicon Boulevard project. E, motion number 2019-16, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Tetra Tech, Inc., increasing project spending to the amount of $94,086 for the Wahaup Lake alum treatment project. F, motion number 2019-17, authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local Union Number 117 for the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2021. G, motion number 2019-18, authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement with Lakewood Water District for the construction of utility improvements within Fort Silicon Park along Angle Lane between Elwood Drive and Silicon Boulevard. H, resolution number 2019-7, resolution of intent to form the American Lake Lake Management District and setting April 22nd, 2019, as the date for a public hearing on the formation of the proposed district. I, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of January 7th, 2019. Two, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of February 6th, 2019. And three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 20th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any council member wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Branstadter.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item H.
Item H, resolution number 2019-07 is removed. Any others? Yes. Okay, motion number 2019-16 is removed from the consent agenda. Any others? Then we move to the consent agenda as amended. Is there a motion? Been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt the consent agenda, absent items E and H. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to motion number 2019-16. Back to Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2019-16, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Tetra Tech, Inc., increasing project spending to the amount of $94,086 for the Wahaup Lake alum treatment project.
Mr. Simpson. Mr. Bucic, are you the appropriate person to tell us what the increase would accomplish?
Mayor Anderson, member of city council, the increase is for Tetra Tech to administer or observe and guide the applicator for the alum treatment through the course of the actually two alum treatments in 2019. So, this is a contract. We need to have the persons qualified to make sure the work is done right, is onsite to do the work.
And that contract has, the alum treatment contract has been awarded or not?
It has not.
So, this wouldn't be accomplished until and unless that contract's awarded?
That's correct.
Mr. Whalen.
Mr. Bucic, the meeting minutes from a meeting or two ago in which we discussed this subject indicated that the total cost would be around $300,000?
It was $340,000, $350,000, yeah.
Did that, $330,000, I think, is what the reference is?
Yeah, thank you.
So, did that cost include a Tetra Tech contract for the observation and testing of the alum treatment by the applicators?
Yes, it did.
So, now we're talking $330,000 plus the difference between $28,000 and $95,000?
Excuse me, I've been corrected. The $330,000 is the application. Our budget is $400,000. So, it does include, it would, $400,000 would cover the cost here. $330,000 would be for the application, and then this addition is necessary for the consultant to assist the contractor in doing the work.
Okay. And just to remind me, the total budget we have is $400,000 for this. We budgeted, actually set aside the monies, $50,000 of which is a Department of Ecology grant.
Correct.
What's the status of the grant?
We've been notified we're going to receive it.
Okay. As you know, there's been some commentary by members of the public to the Department of Ecology in response to our, what was it, ND-PES permit?
N-P-E-S.
Yeah. So, did Ecology have any comment back on that? Did they reject it as a result of any review?
No, we've been, we contacted Ecology to see if they had any concerns or reservations, and their answer is where we have no concerns and reservations. They've heard these similar types of claims in the past. They're comfortable that alum is a safe, effective treatment, and they intend on moving forward with issuing the permit.
And they wouldn't issue the grant unless they felt comfortable with the proposed treatment that's going to be funded in part by the grant?
I think that's a fair statement.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor, you know, this action before us is an addendum to the contract with Tetra Tech. And I am supportive of this amendment because when we had numerous discussions about the strategy and the treatment for Wahaup Lake, you know, one of the concerns that needed to be clarified was how are we going to assess the effectiveness of the treatment that we make? And this addendum to this contract is essentially putting Tetra Tech in that process, and some of their work is going to be where they're going to be doing that assessment work for us so that we will know whether, after the initial treatment of several alum treatments that are proposed, how well it's working. And so, I'm supportive of this addendum and of spending the additional money on the Tetra Tech contract to be able to have that assessment work and an assessment plan in place as we enter into our treatment plan for Wahaup Lake.
So, not to preclude any additional discussion, is there a motion on this? Been moved by Ms., it was been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Mr. Bokey, that we adopt motion number 2019-16. Now, is there any further discussion? Mr. Simpson.
I just want to see if Mr. Bucic can come back up just for a moment and provide some clarifying information for the benefit of some of the council members who weren't present at a meeting. You and I were present with the city manager and a member of the public to address certain concerns. And, Mr. Bucic, you're well familiar with some of the concerns that have been raised by members of the public, well-meaning concerns about the proposed treatment. Can you articulate, just briefly again for the edification of perhaps Mr. Simpson and others, what steps you and staff went through to address the concerns with the retained consultants and experts to ensure that the process, as Mr. Simpson articulated, has been followed and the outcome in terms of the program is appropriate?
I'll try to capture as much as I can, and I appreciate it if you remind me on something that I may miss out on.
There was an email specifically that went kind of point by point over some of the issues and the responses, that kind of?
We've received a lot of concerns and very pointed issues and questions from a couple of our community members. We took those issues and we sent them out to our consultants and asked them to respond to that on a point-by-point basis. For example, alum is toxic. It's going to kill everything in the lake. And the answer is no, it is not. That's why you put a buffering agent with it, and it's been used successfully throughout the United States and other countries for many years. There's been question as to whether our assessment on the dredging costs were appropriate. Our consultant has over 40 years working with lakes, including doing dredging projects throughout the United States, and is pretty confident, very confident, on his costs on those. There have been concerns about carp disturbing the sediment layers in the bottom of the lake. There are carp in the lake. They will disturb small areas in there, but it is unlikely they're going to reduce the effectiveness of the treatment. There were concerns, there have been concerns raised about boats not being able to get near the shoreline because it's too shallow for the barges to actually treat. Effectively, you don't need to treat every square inch of the lake. What we're trying to do is we're trying to knock down the overall concentrations of phosphorus that are in the lake. We'll treat the vast majority of the lake. We've approached two contractors who do this for a living, and we walked them out there. We walked them around the lake. We talked about how we're going to access the lake, how we're going to get the boats in the lake. Do they have any concerns about the vegetation on the shorelines? Do they have any concerns about not being right in, up to the edge? And consistently, the answer was nope, that's not a problem. And the other answer was, hey, can we launch from that area over there? It would be better for us, and that would be about the sum of it. The concerns that there hasn't been enough public process on this, I think, are unfounded. This project has been discussed amongst the community members in different meetings, starting with the development of the IAVMP for this lake. And Greg can speak to the number of meetings and the extensive outreach that occurred, both here at City Hall as well as out at the lake and other locations, and the participation of the two individuals who are most vocal against the treatment of the lake, as well as many others on this issue here. We have spoken with them and state legislators just in the last few weeks, expressing our opinion on the treatment of the lake, and that seems to satisfy the state legislators' levels. Can you remind me, was there another topic?
Well, the one that has been, certainly, the one that was most recently articulated, I think it was a repeat of previous concerns, and this relates to the efficacy and safety of the alum treatment with regard to aquatic life, human health. In other words, the fish, the ingestion of the alum or the bound ions, if you will, by the fish that might be eaten by folks who like to fish in the lake. Has there been any articulated concerns by either the Department of Ecology or any of the experts not involved in being paid to do the alum treatment that have indicated this may cause or is likely to cause a threat to human health or aquatic health?
Absolutely not. This has been approved by the Environmental Protection Agency, as well as our own state Department of Ecology. It has been approved, to my knowledge, in every state for application in the United States. Not only did we speak to our consultant, in fact, I personally called both our current consultant as well as our prior consultant, Brown and Caldwell, spoke to both of them. We've also reached out to a University of Washington professor, and we've also spoken to one of the experts that one of the individuals suggested we talk to. They all con- They all concur that at this point, the alum is a safe and effective treatment, and it's the best application for Wahaup Lake.
So in terms of process, you and Mr. Vigorin are as confident as you can be that the concerns raised by members of the public, again, well-meaning concerns, have been reviewed and addressed satisfactorily?
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Mr. Bucic is up here. Are there any other questions for Mr. Bucic or Mr. Vigorin? Any further discussion? Now, call for vote. All in favor of motion number 2019 day 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to resolution number 2019-07. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2019 dash 07, resolution of intent to form the American Lake Management District and setting April 22nd, 2019, as the date for a public hearing on the formation of the proposed district.
So I just note for the audience, because I know there are a number of people here tonight who are interested in this, this does not form the district. This is one of the legal administrative hoops that has to be jumped through to give people the opportunity to vote whether they want to form a district. Mr. Branshitter, this is your poll.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I asked to have this come off because I would like, Mr. Bucic, when you studied this at the study session, there were a number of adjustments to a couple of sections that related to the assessment rate and the total amount of money that would be assessed, as well as the actual mechanics and things about bringing Camp Murray within the district. And I see that there have been changes in the draft of the resolution from the time we had that study session, but I would just, would like to hear the specifics about particularly the changes that were made to section two, section four, and appendix A.
So, section two, based on the council concurrence that we include Camp Murray, we went back and looked at our financial spreadsheet, and we shifted Camp Murray from a direct funder to a part of Lake Management District. When we did that, it changed the spread of the costs. So the cost went from 73 cents per lineal foot down to 66 cents per lineal foot. So that's a, that's a good thing for the lakefront property owners. They're very happy to hear that. On section, that also, though, what that means is that costs that were accounted for under Camp Murray are now accounted for under the Lake Management District, which is why you see the cost went up. It's just where the costs were being spread out to. So that's why we now have 66 cents and 209,766 over 10 years. I think that, I think that answers both of your questions.
And then we have a different map for appendix A, and as I look at, at the map, it's, well, it still shows the same boundaries for the city of Lakewood. There's, there is a line that now, that includes Camp Murray and the, and the DNR property that is a boat launch. Is that right?
DNR is on Camp Murray, so it's all state property, yes. This graphic now shows the inclusion of the Camp Murray properties into the Lake Management District.
So the only properties excluded are federal properties?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for? Entertained a motion, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Mr. Branshitter, that we adopt resolution number 2019-07. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Whalen.
I just want to applaud the neighbors who are here and those that aren't for their efforts of self-determination on this issue. It makes a big difference to have people who stand up and get together as neighbors to try to accomplish issues of concern for themselves and their neighborhood, and the city is here to help. And I think this has been a great opportunity for us to witness that good action in practice. So thank you very much for your efforts.
I always think it's a much, there's a much greater chance of success if it's your idea instead of ours. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing to consider the vacation of Seattle Ave. Southwest right-of-way between Pacific Highway Southwest and Interstate 5.
Thank you. Mr. Vigorin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Miller Family Holdings LLC submitted a request to vacate Seattle Avenue right-of-way between Pacific Highway and Interstate 5. The interutilized right-of-way is located adjacent to property owned by Miller Family Holdings, which until recently held the Colonial Motel, as noted in the vicinity map. There you go, okay. So that shows the right-of-way in question, as well as the property to the northeast is owned by Miller Family Holdings. I also want to acknowledge that folks from Miller Family Holdings are here tonight, Josh Miller and Chris Keely, as well as Heather Burgess representing their interests. So they propose to incorporate the approximate 23,000 square foot right-of-way into their property, and they plan to redevelop the property. A property appraisal is forthcoming. The property value will be determined and agreed upon before we return to you for approval of the vacation. On February 4th, 2019, City of Lakewood City Council passed resolution number 2019 dash 03, setting a public hearing date regarding the proposed vacation for this evening. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Tacoma News Tribune. A placard was posted on the site, and mailers were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the proposed vacation area, along with the local utility companies. Staff has not received any objections to the proposed vacation. We did get some interest from a number of utilities that have infrastructure in the right-of-way. Recommended conditions of the vacation are listed in the staff report. Staff recommends that council hold the public hearing this evening, and staff will prepare an ordinance for city council consideration at a later date, once the value of the land has been determined. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Vigorin? Have one, the folks at Extra Space Storage have expressed no interest, or?
That's correct. They signed off on allowing Miller Family Holdings to purchase all of the right-of-way. Their name, they signed the petition as well, and you have a copy of that in your packet.
Well, thank you. So the rules for the public hearing are very similar to public comment, except that the subject matter of testimony needs to be limited to the vacation of Seattle Avenue Southwest right-of-way between Pacific Highway Southwest and Interstate 5. We have two people who have signed up versus Mr. Dennis Haugen. She approaches reminded you have three minutes, 30 seconds warning with the yellow light and red light. Your time's up.
Dennis Haugen, I have no idea what, exactly what was in this lawsuit. But if you're going to amend the sign agreement, first of all, what's the purpose of a sign?
We're not, we're having a public hearing on vacation of the street.
Oh, okay, I thought you said the...
The next person who signed up is Mr. Josh Miller.
Thank you all. On behalf of the Miller family, we just wanted to say we're thankful that the board has reviewed our application, and that we're excited for new construction of our facility with our new team, Chris, and several other members of the community. We built several jobs in city of Lakewood and excited for another nice, quality-looking building. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people who've signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at the public hearing on the vacation of Seattle Avenue Southwest? Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at the public hearing? Hearing done, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to the next public hearing. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing regarding the proposal to amend Lakewood Municipal Code chapters 18A dot 50 dot 600 through 18A 50 dot 680 related to signs.
For this, we have Ms. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. This evening is the scheduled public hearing date to review amendments to the Lakewood Municipal Code Title 18A related to signs. The agenda bill includes information regarding the city's public outreach effort and discussion following the March 11 study session. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Brunel? The only person who is, then we'll, yeah, one clarifying question. Mr. Whalen.
I know we're having the public hearing tonight. We did receive some public comment by way of written testimony from the Realtors Association. Have those points been addressed, adopted into the proposed code?
They have not yet been adopted into the ordinance tonight. The fee schedule or comment regarding the fee schedule would obviously be adopted at a later time. The portable signs and A-frame signs allowed in the right-of-way was what we had discussed during the last study session to allow those in residential zones. The draft does not currently allow for that sign type in residential zones in any place, and those are the only types of signs that are permitted in this draft to be located in the right-of-way. So that would need to be an amendment. I believe that those are the only two items that...
The dating in the corner of the temporary signs, are we still doing that? Is that something important to do?
That is included in this, in this draft, yes. And that's a matter of us being able to enforce the code. We had a difficult time brainstorming other ways that we could possibly see how long a temporary sign had been installed without having some type of permitting process, which may be cumbersome for the public. And so that was kind of a middle ground, if you will, to try to allow for staff to be able to enforce this code, but still not have those necessarily be permanent signs.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Brunel? Then we'll move to the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Again, if you wish to speak, please come to the mic when your name is called. Three minutes is allowed, 30 seconds warning with the yellow light, red light, your time is up. Please limit your comments to the proposal to amend Lakewood Municipal Codes Chapter 18A point 50, 600 to 680 related to signs. The person who has signed up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, the purpose of signs is to get people to buy stuff. And one of the, one of the ways they buy stuff is they see, they see signs. But if you drive through Lakewood, there's two balancing problems. You don't, you don't have enough signage, and you got too many trees. Driving by this mall in the summertime, you couldn't tell what was in this mall. Well, people often drive by something, and maybe a week later they need something, and they'll go back to that store. The whole tree and sign thing is like, you don't want to do business. You don't want to do business because you don't need the taxes, huh? What's the problem? I think the problem is too many people have had an influence in the sign thing and the tree planting thing together. They've never run a business, never signed a paycheck, never had to worry about where the money's coming from. And I think you just need to relook at, look at both the tree planting thing and the signage together somehow. Tie them together, and we need less trees. Now that, like, for a mall like this, they're expensive to maintain. With that gravel base underneath, the roots go straight out instead of down, they tear up roads, sidewalks, proches, that costs money to replace. Start acting like you're proud of the business district. You want people to come here. You want people to see what you got. They can't do that with too many trees and not enough signs. I mean, I've wanted to go buy something, and I know a business is there, and I can't even tell that it's out of business till I get off the road and right in front of it. Same works in reverse. If it was still there, a lot of people that didn't know it was there would have probably stopped back and bought something. Not everybody likes to go to Amazon. They like to go and look at stuff, try it out, ask questions. Can't do that at Amazon. So it's getting increasingly tough and competitive. Thank you.
So all the people who've signed up to testify at the public hearing on amending the Lakewood Municipal Code related to signs, is there anyone else who wishes to testify at this public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at the public hearing regarding amendment of the sign code? Hearing done, I declare the public hearing closed. Now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is no unfinished business.
We know, move to new business. Is there any new business?
And no new business.
Wow. And we're chugging right along. We will move to reports by the city manager. Ms. Kraus, acting.
I'd like to call on Chief Sorrow to present the 2018 police report.
Mayor Anderson, council members, thank you. This is the 2018 annual police report. I'm going to go a couple spots, I'll jump around a little bit, but mostly in order. I want to say first, it was, for those of you remember, 2017 wasn't exactly a great year for us. 2018 was markedly improved. I do want to say that probably the highlight of 2018 was the addition of honorary chief Matty Middleton. She's, her term is coming to an end here next month, but she really has become a part of the department, so much that when she's driving around with her mom, if they see an officer, they roll their car window down and wave and say something, and it's just been great having her around. And she's got, still has a tough battle ahead of her for her medical conditions, but she's part of the department and always will be. One of the other positive things that occurred in 2018 were the retirements of three of our longtime personnel, Detective Ray Penzallan, Detective Kim Holmes, and Officer Joe Coop, all retired, and Officer Masonette, all retired this last year. And I think that's probably the most in one year we've had, or at least close, as a department since we started, and all four were founding members of the police department. So that's one of the things that we're going to start seeing more of, and I think I've mentioned that to you in the, in the past. And this does kind of bring up the point about our, the balance in the age of our employees. And the, one of the things that was brought up to us or noticed not too long ago, the badges that we originally had for the founding members had stars on them. And you had to be hired within the first year or two to get a badge with a star, but we now have more members without stars than with on the department. So times are definitely changing. A couple of the new programs that I want to highlight, one that I've talked about, I think, a few times with all of you, is the Bike Patrol program. And not exactly new, but new and improved, or improved anyways, just a lot of positive response from that, and as I've said before... Just a lot of positive response from that, and as I've said before, you can see a lot more of that or expect to see a lot more from them in the years to come. And we do have some interesting highlights. Jeff Carroll, one of the sergeants on the bike team, keeps good track of the hours and the miles ridden, and so you can see that...so, some of the productivity with the initiated calls and the citizen contacts. And then Lieutenant Allwine would be upset with me if I didn't mention that he leads the pack with 90 miles for the year. Another new highlight for us was our Coffee with a Cop and Cocoa with a Cop. And Coffee with a Cop was...it was a national event that other agencies have done, and we held it at the Starbucks on 100th Street and just received a lot of positive response from it, except for some people, some parents that said, hey, you know, my eight-year-old's not really into coffee. Is there something that we can do for them? So, that's where we came up with Cocoa for a Cop, and we held that at the station, and that was tremendously successful. We had a lot of kids and families come through, take tours of the station, and I think really put a positive face on the department and also give those kids a nice...just a nice break. And National Night Out, as always, was...you know, we talk about ways to do it different every year, but we seem to keep...we were successful with the way it's been going, and neighbors still seem to want to participate, or neighborhoods do, and we always have plenty of events to attend. This has been the ongoing...I've presented these numbers for every year that I think I've done the presentation. You can see calls for service, total calls for service on the top. That combines dispatched and self-initiated are at the lowest since 2012. And not...and the majority of those are obviously calls for service, people calling 911, and I view that as a positive thing. I don't think people are not calling 911 because they don't trust the police or they don't want to report their problems to us, because there's no shortage of people that, you know, want to call 911. I just think that there...people are experiencing fewer crises and significant incidents where they feel the need to call the police. One of the...kind of fits well with some of the public hearings and the public comment we had tonight, but our...under our patrol specialty, we have all of our, exactly what it sounds like, specialty units to include marine services and also CSRT, and the front desk also falls under that. And these are the stats that you're seeing at the bottom of there is the numbers of inquiries and walk-ins and phone calls and reports taken at the front desk. As you can see, it is a very busy front desk at the police station, and if, you know, any of you would like, you know, to come and come by and help Joy sometime, man at the front desk, you could see firsthand that just the volume of people and phone calls that come in. And again, more under CSRT, the Community Oriented Policing Program. We see some of the highlights noted down below and some of the numbers of complaints that came in. So, in 2018, there were 731 code complaints that came in, 350 reports using My Lakewood 311, which I've got to say has been, I think, just an invaluable tool brought in by the city. It really allows citizens a simple way to report a variety of concerns or compliments to the city. And under the code enforcement highlights, some of those you may remember, some not. On 108th Street, for years, the Northeast Neighborhood Association was dealing with a couple of properties there with a lot...owned by the same person, with a lot of junk cars and not having much success in coercing compliance. It actually took enforcement to get the owner to move the cars out, and the Neighborhood Association is extremely grateful. I think at one point talked about reducing the number of meetings they were going to have because they...their problem was gone. So, good work by CSRT, and it's more about persistence and just trying their best to work with the property owners, and, you know, if it comes to enforcement, that's what they'll do. Our traffic unit also falls under specialty units, and this is all, by the way, run by Lieutenant Andy Gilda House. As you can see, the total accidents, which is, you know, something we always want to keep an eye on, was a...from 17 to 18 was down 8 percent. So, definitely a positive turn. I will give most the credit of that to Public Works and the roadwork that they've done in the past year or two, because really, as you drive around, the roads are just safer just by design, and I think that's reflected in some of the collision numbers. Our other newest program is our drone program, our unmanned aircraft. Austin Lee, who I think you've all have met at one time or another, runs that program and runs it very well. He's become recognized as sort of a statewide expert on managing the FAA process and has been loaned out and called upon by agencies across the state for help in developing their own programs. And that's because of his patience and his knowledge of the FAA process that we were able to get our program up and running, and it's the reason he's recognized around the state as well. And you can see the...in the report, it documents all of our uses of the drone, and as I said when we first started the program, transparency was a big part of it, and all of these are posted on our website for everybody to see, so they can see when and where the drones are being used and for what purpose.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
How far out can that deploy? Some of the words, if you get a call that there's an accident at Bridgeport Gravulate Drive, can you fly it out of LPD Headquarters and get over there? From there, or do you have to get within some proximity?
You have to get within some proximity, and so one of the rules, I believe, that the FAA has is that you have line of sight of it, so you have to be able to see it. There are...Austin did find agencies around the country that are using them to deploy further than line of sight and actually, you know, using them as first responders, essentially. But that's...right now anyways, I think that is very risky and in violation of the rules that we need to operate by. And our behavioral health contact team is still going strong. They...as you can see, they're still providing, you know, 465 separate episodes of care in just in 2018. I hear them on the radio all the time. Officers are calling on them. They're being proactive. They're following up with people that they know are frequent callers, and again, that was one of the purposes of developing this program, was to reduce the incidents where the people get to crisis and then call 911, and then you have police intervention. It's to get to them before they get to crisis, and Ralph and Carolyn are still doing an outstanding job with that, and you all should take a lot of pride and the credit for that. The city's never hesitated to fund that or to support that, and I think that's a...you know, we started that in 2015 when I think Tacoma hadn't even developed theirs yet, but had been collecting quite a bit of money to do it for a year prior to that. And then animal control is as well. You could see that 2,000 service requests and four potentially dangerous dog sightings and hearings. We don't get those a lot, but when we do, they're taken very seriously. But again, just another unit that is very busy throughout the year, and that's also one of our...I think that is our...in addition to courts, that is one of the only other contract services that we provide to other jurisdictions with Stillicum and DuPont. Our canine unit is going strong and again, recognized across the state with Officer Jim Seiler being a master trainer, who is currently actually training two Kent officers at our station, and I mean, right now, in addition to one of our new dogs that replaced Ranger, who's pictured up there that retired this last year. And just a few of the stats that you see with our...those are from our detection dog, Sean Conlin's dog, and some of the detection work that they did. Now, this, as boring as this might seem, this is one of the things that, when I give tours of the station and I show the evidence room, it's the thing that...one of the things that really wows people is how clean and managed it looks, especially people from other police departments, because they aren't all like that. There's agencies out there that have had to...have never gotten rid of anything and have to rent space elsewhere just to store their new property because they're so far behind, they can't...they can't keep up. Erica Meeks is our property room supervisor, and she stays...well, all of the techs that work down there really stay on top of keeping what we need to keep and disposing of property that we don't need. And for an evidence room our size, that's what you need to do, and when you go down there, it is just a very neat and well-managed evidence room. And here we are with...again, we are still under our specialty units section. Metro SWAT, who served 33 missions last year. Marine Services, who spent a lot of time on the water, 358 hours and 225 citations. A couple of search and rescue and recovery cases where they assist divers. They are also a very busy unit. They try and spend as much time as they can out on the water and in the boat launches during the summer, and I think have a...do a good job of having just a visible presence, particularly on American Lakes, some of our smaller lakes, they're not out on as much, and a lot of that is just logistically is harder to get out on. Yes, sir.
Mr. Whalen, go back to the last slide if you would.
Yes.
So, on the Metro SWAT team, we know about the transition. What is the city's SRT doing with regard to calls from outside agencies? Are we still kind of working with them on certain aspects, or how are we working with that SRT team currently?
Do you mean the co-op cities or...?
Right.
We are not doing any work with the co-op cities, SRT work. The team is only doing work for Lakewood, and that's Lakewood search warrants, Lakewood, you know, barricaded incidents if they occur, things that are within their capability. One good example would be the...in addition to the several warrants that they've served, the guy on I-5 a couple weeks ago that had barricaded himself in his car and screwed up traffic for hours. That was moving towards an SRT call, but he ended up giving up prior to that being taking place. But certainly more on SRT as we move forward in next year on their activities. Now, we're moving to criminal investigations. We have our special assault unit, and again, another very busy unit, and this is the...this unit handles not just sexual assaults, but assaults of children of all nature, and one of the most process-laden units or investigations when you're talking about children, because there's a lot of coordination that you do with Mary Bridge Children's Hospitals, the child interviewers through the CAC, the prosecutor's office. There's a lot of processes that go into these types of investigations, and we have very good and experienced detectives in there now that are able to effectively handle those. And in major crimes, those...that's where our felony assaults, well, all assaults, all persons crimes that are non-DB are investigated, but primarily are felony assaults. And as I've talked about before, last year, we had a significant spike in homicides, but as I've also talked about, there is no commonality amongst any of them. They're all listed there, and as you can see, a murder-suicide, a self-defense shooting, a gang shooting at the VIP lounge, the adult family home homicide, which we all know about. So, there's no commonality that I look at and think, well, we've got this significant type of crime that's resulting in homicides that we would address. And it's worth noting that in the New World Suicide...or the New World homicide, five of the six, either five of the six or six of the seven, I forget the total number, all but one of the suspects are in custody. And this is some of the stats that are the results or the...that show the results of what...or try to measure what our units have been doing. As you can see, persons crimes are down just under, well, 1.63 percent from 2017, and if you look at from 14 to 18, again, on our way down, hopefully continuing that way. And property crimes, year-to-date, from 17 to 18, up one point, or a little over 1 percent, something that, you know, we're...obviously, we watch, and I do think that our retail theft emphasis will have a significant impact on that throughout the coming year. And then special operations, and you can see some of the...these are...this is our vice unit essentially. You can see some of the cases or the numbers of drug buys and guns seized and the arrests and felony arrests that they've made. And then the total crime, as you can see, when we combine persons, property, and society crimes, down just under 1 percent from last year, which any decrease I'll take, again, factoring in society crimes, and we did have the, you know, the spike in '16, and we're on our way back down from there. Forensic Services, which is also falls under criminal investigations. I like to highlight this mostly because of Brian Johnson, the detective that's our forensic services manager, is recognized nationally for his work in forensic science. He's presented to groups across the country about different aspects of forensics. He's gotten us on the verge of accreditation for our officers that are our two other detectives that are...that work on the forensics side of the house, and just worth recognizing just because we do have...we are lucky enough to have him here. And then professional standards, which is where our training backgrounds, internal affairs, all of that is housed. So, some of the...what I'll show you now are just some of the...what's kept them busy throughout the year, and one of the things that I've always highlighted is the number of training hours that we're able to provide our officers, and it's 120 hours of in-service training per officer. That's the average, and which is well beyond what the academy requires, and this...I'm proud of the fact that we've always been able to do that. A well-trained department is a professional department, and I think reflects well on the city and you all. Use of force numbers, these are something else that I've always presented and been very transparent about. As you can see, we had the same amount, 86 this year, or in 2018, we did in '17, and again, these...you can see the criteria for reporting a use of force, any use of physical strength, skill, or pain compliance technique that result in a visible injury or complaint of injury, any use of physical strikes, any use of less-lethal weapon as described, you know, taser, baton, or pepper spray, any discharge of a firearm, and any time multiple officers are required to overcome resistance. So, we essentially...we tried to capture anything that somebody, a citizen watching, would consider a use of force, and some of those, it can be as minor as, you know, putting somebody... And some of those, it can be as minor as, you know, putting somebody in handcuffs and they said, ah, you hurt my, my shoulder, that would be a use of force because of the complaint of pain. With that, 86, when you compare that to the number of arrests, and I still have, I've presented this year in and year out as well, because I think it's important to note that it's different than the, what I think the stereotype is of police work, out of 2,100 arrests, only 86 required a use of force. And not, those aren't even all tied to a use of force, some of those were to get somebody detained for mental health reasons and to get them involuntarily committed. So again, very low number, it's less than 4% of all arrests require a use of force. And compared to all, total calls for service, it's less than, I think it was, well, definitely less than 1%, I think it's less than half percent.
Is there, is there any kind of wildlife you'd shoot other than a coyote?
Like if there's a deer hit by a car?
Oh.
We'll, we'll dispatch a deer, but, and the occasional coyote. Internal investigations, it's still under professional standards. We had 10 investigations in 2018 that involved 20 different allegations. One investigation, like if somebody says this officer used excessive force and swore at me and did, you know, smoked a cigarette in front of me, those are three different policy violations that would be associated with one investigation. That's why it says there was 10 investigations, but 20 allegations, because an investigation can involve more than one. And you could see that a couple of those are still wrapping up, but most were either exonerated or unfounded. And then officer-involved collisions is something we've been tracking for years as well. We had 22 total collisions, which is the lowest in four years, which I'm very happy about, not just for the property damage, but also the, the risk of injury to the officers and to the citizens when there is a collision. Of note as well is that the, where'd the number go? The 12 collisions, eight occurred in a parking, in a parking lot. Of the 12 where the officers were at fault, eight occurred in a parking lot backing into something, which is embarrassing for the officer, and none of us want to see, we don't want the property damage, but it is much better than running into a citizen on the public Again, just something we've been keeping track of year after year. And pursuits as well, we had 38, which is the same as in 2017. And what we're seeing now, 10 were terminated by the, by LPD staff, whether it's sergeants or the officers involved. We did not use, we didn't used to see that. We didn't used to see pursuits being terminated, they just went until they came to whatever their natural conclusion was, which oftentimes might have been a collision. I think what that, that reflects is much better decision-making by our supervisors and the officers to kind of take a breath and think about why they're chasing the person, and is it worth it to keep going? So that, right there is, I think, is a very positive stat. And some more positive news, these are always great to see, the recognition given to our officers and then also new hires. We had, you could see the officers up there that received their awards, I think at council meetings, and they have all, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about being able to come here and share those with you guys. So I hope you appreciate that, because they certainly do. Our new hires that we've been able to hire, Officer, well, Brandon's not only with us, but Daniel Pyon, Jamin Dobson, Josh Beecham, North Cut, Light Gib, Melody Wright, Savannah Brown, and Travis Elsara. And Travis and Savannah are set to graduate the academy on April 10th, doing very well. They both are very high performers, and it will not surprise me if one or both of them doesn't finish in the top of their class in some category. And then our core compliance officers that we were able to hire, and we moved one core compliance officer, Sean Dunn, over to code enforcement, which reminds me of a retirement that we forgot, Sandy Stauffer retired as code enforcement. And again, the, the awards that were given out, you know, what, 15, 19 formal awards given out to officers, and that's to say nothing of the informal commendations that we get from citizens that I try to make sure that you all are able to see. And then emergency management, which for some of us, sounds pretty boring, for others, they, they thrive in this environment, and John Unfred is one of those, and he's become, again, recognized nationally for his expertise in this area. And we actually had him and Sergeant Andy Suver go to North Carolina for help with the hurricane, and Andy Suver went back for a second hurricane within months of that, or within a few weeks of that. So very experienced emergency management practitioners. And again, John is not only recognized regionally, but nationally for his work in the field. And then finally, our community and media relations, our public information officers, Lieutenant Chris Lawler, does an outstanding job, he's been doing it for a while, he does a great job with the, with the mainstream media, is doing a good job with the, with social media, is, and that's largely a team effort. And I do want to give credit to, she left already, so I can say this, to Bryn Grimley. She, her efforts in the field, in the area of social media has forced the rest of us to step up our game, and that includes Chris Lawler and Joanna Nichols, and our social media presence has really grown and become more well-established, thanks to her kind of pushing us along. And you can see some of the numbers there with likes and numbers of followers. And that's it, that was 2018 and a brief blast. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you all have.
Questions for Chief Zaro. Thank you.
All right.
I like the format.
Oh, thanks.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Ms. Kraus, anything else?
Tomorrow morning, we have, sorry, thanks. Tomorrow morning, we have at 8:00, 7 o'clock, till 8:30 at the McGavick Center Communities and Schools, 2019 Champions for Youth Breakfast. In the evening tomorrow, we have the 97th Annual Lakeview Light and Power Annual Meeting in City Council Chambers. On Wednesday, March 20th, we have the State of the County by Pierce County Executive Dan Meyer at the County-City Building. On Thursday, March 21st, the tip-off is at 6:30 PM for the 10th Annual Cops vs. Teachers Basketball Game, sponsored by the Clover Park Kiwanis Club and Lakes High School Klee Club to benefit caring for kids at Lakes High School. And on Friday, March 22nd, at 10:30, we have Stephen A. Cohen Military Family Clinic Grand Opening at 6103 Mountain Tohoma Drive Southwest. And that concludes my update.
Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Thank you very much. Move to council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just report out that I did attend the 2019 Elected Official of Color Reception tonight, held at the Governor's Mansion. It was well-attended, it was the second one they had, because I'd never heard of it before. So this was the second meeting, and they've already outgrown the building, so they're gonna have to move it around for next year. But it was just a networking opportunity, and I had made some good connections.
Great. Mr. Wilkie?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Thank you for mentioning the Communities and Schools Breakfast tomorrow morning at the McGavick Center. The youth, youth council met tonight, they're planning their youth summit. I see now the mayor is one of the speakers there on Saturday, April 13th, but I'm hoping that a lot of you can make it. It's over at the Boys and Girls Club, and it starts at 9:00 AM, checking, 9:30 is the keynote speaker. And they, they have done a good job of putting this together, they really have. I told the group tonight, I'm really impressed with how they've, they created this idea, they, they came up with some ideas about speakers or subjects, and they have just done a wonderful job in executing it. And they're hopeful that a lot of folks will show up right now, so they've got about a month to bring them in. And then I think we have another PCRC meeting on Thursday night, which I believe I will be able to attend. And the subject is, I just had it, yeah, I don't know that we're voting on anything, it looks like there's. PSRC Policy Board Appointments. Yeah, it's just a lot of appointments. And then an update, Puget Sound Regional Council update with Paula Ingram. I don't know if we're getting our legislative update or not. So we'll see how it goes, but I will be able to make that, I think, 6:00 PM, Thursday night, the 21st, first day of spring, way to celebrate. That is all, Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. President?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting this past Thursday. Probably the, the most significant thing that people didn't quite understand, and that I couldn't quite make clear, has to do with the "don't cross the street" signs on Gravelly Lake, where you have to walk a half a mile to a crosswalk, even though you're at an intersection where there are bus stops on both sides of the street. So they understood that the signs are there, they understood that there were some requirements to put those things in there because of the type of funds that we used. And the questions turned to, what is the policy on enforcing jaywalking going to be along that street? I don't know, it, it, it really seems like these are a couple of, we've got some unenforceable visual aids along that street there that's going to be able to do that, and I take the que, I interpreted the questions of, if there was a good reason for it, people would be willing to support it, but I, I, I didn't do well articulating, articulating that. So whoever goes to the meeting the, the next time, you can do your research and develop a speech, maybe go to a Toastmasters session earlier and try to, look to be able to do that. I do intend to go to the, the, the grand opening of the Cohen Center on, on, on Friday. I think that's a, both a great addition to, to the community, a service of veterans, and fits very well with our vision of being supportive of military family members and, and, and service members, to be able to go through and do that. And I certainly hope that it, that it, that it, that it persists. You know, I, I'm still somewhat disenchanted by the demise of Rally Point 6, where when, after the USO took it over, they, it no longer became something that was invested vocally, and then they lost interest in keeping it local. So, you know, we'll move forward with that. I am moving ahead with my plan to visit our sister city of Gimhae, Korea, in, for, for the celebration of their 2,000th year. So we'll move forward, but that's mid-April, so if, if any of you can think of some things I should say, do, or take with me, please let me know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whelan?
Well, thank you. I was going to first comment on the Gravelly Lake sidewalk signage. Whenever some of those things come up, I typically blame them on Mary Moss, as being one of her suggestions, the sidewalk signage. I'm just, it's a joke, Mary, it's a joke. Quick comment on the sister city comment for you and your trip, I think it's gonna be a great trip. One of the things that Spokane did really well with their sister city program is they invited their sister city to provide or recommend a dedicated planting, and so they have a really beautiful park in South Hill Spokane that has plants from their sister city societies from around the world, that, that work in the Northwest, those kinds of plantings. So it might be something, you know, given the development of Motor Avenue, if we have someplace where we can have a dedicated, you know, a certain kind of tree that's cool to grow in that, in that region, that might be symbolic here in the city of Lakewood, as we've worked toward that.
I will ask in also that a delegation of city officials and citizens, seven of them are going to be coming here mid-July, to be here the week prior and for SummerFest. So we'll be getting a delegation, return delegation from Gimhae in the summer.
Yeah, so we, we don't have that quite yet in Lakewood. I know Tacoma's done a lot with their sister city thing, I think the Bagota down there, and they've got another Japanese mini-garden downtown, so little things like that make a difference, so, thought on that. On the, there was a meeting about Lakewood image update, do we have any feedback on that? Either city clerk or acting city manager, it was a Becky Newton event. If not, if we can get an update, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to see where that is, because that was an event I wasn't able to attend, I was kind of on the list, but I assume that they did some good stuff there. And that is about it, I'm gonna be out on next Monday night, the 25th, spring break, taking the kids, the last hurrah before the oldest one gets hitched. So I'll see you the week after that.
All right.
Excuse my absence.
Hey, Coffee with the Mayor on Tuesday morning, John Coffield did a great job of presenting the State of the City. In the, the next two days, the 19th and the 20th, JBLM's holding its delayed meetings for Army Community Partnership kind of orientation and information session, and we have folks that will be attending. That is, these dates are real. In 1995, Congress authorized a test program in Monterey, California, spearheaded by Fred Maurer, who was the city manager there and had been Colonel Public Works Officer under one Bill Harrison when he was 7th ID down there. And it was successful, and the test program. So after much delay and debate, in 2005, Congress authorized the program Army, Defense Department-wide. The Army didn't sign a contract, a contract with somebody other than them until about When we asked out here, we'd heard about this program, talked to Fred, and the feedback we got is basically, big Army doesn't really want to do this. But now, they've been voluntold across the country that they are going to do this, and that it's a, it's an area of emphasis, is part of writing this and resiliency, to gain some efficiencies, and try to farm out as much as you can that doesn't have to do with lethality or security. And so, yeah, so you do, you partner with the community to provide any service that can be provided that isn't a warfighting function. And so, it can be patching potholes, joint purchases of road salt for the winter, mowing the lawn. And so there's some really opportunities here, the catches have been, two things that were corrected in the last, well, one thing that's been corrected in the last about year was the wage rates that you had to use before you were locked into federal wage rates. Now you can use the federal wage rate or the, or the municipality's government entity of locality, of the locality's wage rate. So that's hurtled. The other one is you can't displace federal employees, which means you are... which means you are, there are two views on that one, is that you could only displace other contractors on no-bed contracts. The other one, and the guy that presented this was a, the guy who was essentially the civilian equivalent of Tom Knight at a munitions place in New Jersey. If you don't have to fire anybody to do it, was their interpretation at that base. In that case, they had electricians messing with traffic lights and some other stuff that they farmed out. They needed, they were understaffed, they couldn't find enough electricians. They needed them to do other, more important functions at the facility. So they moved them over, reprioritized what they did, and got away with it that way. So more to come, but there may be some opportunities for cooperation across the fence line. So they have, they're pushing it, and they're actually signing contracts across the country, which they haven't done before. Pardon?
Thank you, Mayor, so what would be, are they looking at us for the next step, or are they?
What they're doing is having two sessions, one is just a general orientation session, and they have breakout separate sessions like Public Works, MWR, the recreation kind of thing. I think there are three of them, I forget what the other one is. And in doing that, they will brainstorm possibilities, show what they have, see what assets are available locally. And it could be that they have a contract when they run Freedom Fair, or whatever they call their on-base event that doesn't conflict with us, and we could run their event cheaper than they run it. Maybe there are, there are opportunities like patching the road, you know, joint purchasing. So, and then there are utility things, I think utilities might be one subset, but they're looking at utility things too, so. It allows them to have up to, I think the base authorization level was raised to a million dollars annually, a million dollars for a contract, where they can contract without bidding, without going through the FARs, just on a negotiated contract with the government. So more to come, there might be something we're cooperating on. And then, in case you haven't seen it, my final thing, I commend you, and I'll send everybody a link, so we're discussing it in public, it won't be a, not to comment on. Eric Johnson of Como did a, essentially an exposé slash mini-documentary called Seattle is Dying. Every public official should see this. It discloses the problems in Seattle and the causes of the problems in Seattle, and how they aren't being addressed in an appropriate manner. It's well-done, it is documented, he validates what he says. He, also, it's, yeah, Eric Johnson, you guys did Eric's Little Heroes, guy. And it's on Como. It's, it is excellent, we, county exec's office circulated to everybody. And it's what to, what to avoid, you can't, you're not gonna tiny house your way out of kind of problem Seattle has, so. Is there anything further to come before the council? Then we're adjourned.
I'll look that up, that sounds good.
Oh, yeah, if I hadn't forgotten my iPad at work, I, in fact, I could send you one, one that people use.